Okay, let's go.
I'd like to call a special meeting, Lord, with our on- please rise for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bring on our school district. Please be with us this evening as we continue our efforts to provide environments for our students that are conducive to excellence in teaching and learning. Hope us, Father, to always be good stewards of the public's trust, and thank you for your continuing support we receive from our community. These things we pray in your name.
Amen. Ms. Lamont would lead us in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Foche.
Mrs. Acevedo, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan, Mr. Gaines, Mrs. Diesard, Mr. England, Mrs. Lemoine, Mr. Long, Mr. Smith is not with us, and Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. At this time, I'd like to take a point of privilege, please. We'd just like to take a moment of silence, please, for Dr. Hugh Craft, who passed on right at the same time we had our meeting the last time. Dr. Craft has been on his board since 1995. He's a cornerstone for the community college, and he is a fighter for public education, and I was honored, it's been an honor for this whole board to sit with him and work with him to advance every student in this parish. We thank you. Thank you. Okay, move on to item number four, Declaration of a Board Vacancy on School Board District Six Appointment of a Interim Member. Ms. Diesard.
Yes, at this time, excuse me, I would like to declare that there is a vacancy in the St. Bernard Parish School Board, and at this time, I would like to make the motion to appoint Ms. Carolyn Craft to fill that unexpired term for Dr. Hugh Craft.
In a second, that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Ms. Foche, for the state, for the public state, will you please do a roll call vote, please?
All right, Mrs. Acevedo, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan, Mr. Gaines, Mrs. Diesard, Mr. England, Mrs. Lemoine, Mr. Long, Mr. Smith, not with us, and Mr. Warner.
Four.
Motion carries nine zero.
Congratulations. And it's well deserved, it really is.
Please just stay seated.
Just stay, okay. Now, we've got to do, we're going to, we've got to do a resolution to call for a special election to fill the vacancy in the School Board District Six. I'm going to read the resolution, then we're going to need a motion. Whereas a vacancy has been declared in District Six of School District Number One of the St. Bernard State of Louisiana, and whereas the term of office for the vacancies, District Six seat exceeds one year, and whereas in accordance with Louisiana Statute eighteen six oh two, the St. Bernard Parish School Board must issue within twenty days of the resulting vacancy a call for a special election to fill the term of the District Six seat. Now, be therefore resolved that the St. Bernard Parish School Board in accordance with Louisiana's revised statute eighteen four oh two calls for a special election to fill the vacancy declared for its District Six seat, with primary election set for March thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, and general election set for May fourth, two thousand and nineteen, and be further resolved that in accordance with Louisiana's revised statute eighteen four sixty-seven, four sixty-seven point one, and four sixty-eight, the qualifying period for the candidates be January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, through February first, two thousand and nineteen, and further be resolved that this is a true and exact copy of a resolution adopted by the St. Bernard Parish School Board as a special meeting held on October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. We have a motion by Ms. Acevedo, second by Mr. Long. Please cast your votes.
Could we just do a roll call just to be safe on this one?
You want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, Ms. Foche.
Mrs. Acevedo, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Egan, Mr. Gaines, Mrs. Diesard, Mr. England, Mrs. Lemoine, Mr. Long, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Warner.
Okay. Okay, move on to item number six, Adjournment. We have a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Diesard. All in favor?
Aye.
Special means adjournment. We'll take a five-minute break to have to swear in and ceremony. And Mr., say this. Tonight, we have Mr. Judge Danny Diesard, who's going to swear in, Ms. Carolyn Craft, for District Seat Six. Mr. Diesard?
First of all, just want to say it's an honor to be here and swear in the chair in the board position. Your husband was such a leader for this parish in so many ways, and particularly, you know, in the field of education, everything from a school teacher administrator to school board member to dean, and so he will be greatly grateful, and it's a blessing for us to have you to step into his position. So with that said, I'll ask you to repeat after me. I, Carolyn H. Craft.
I, Carolyn H. Craft.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, and the Constitution, and the laws of this state, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as School Board Member, District Six.
As School Board Member, District Six.
St. Bernard Parish.
St. Bernard Parish.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Would the board members like to just take a photograph of Mr. Craft?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, neighbor. Whoops, excuse me.
Come see what I just did.
You bet.
He's just giving him a question.
I used to be in on the back row of the hall.
Yes, he is.
I just hope he can come to the spirit to do this.
He's here.
He's here.
Jenny.
Jenny.
That's what I'm, she knows you're well enough, she can say that. One, two, three. Thank you.
Great.
With your new camera, just for this to get.
I don't care.
How you doing? You're in the air?
Diane, are you ready to see?
All right.
You got another one in the call?
Yeah. You live eight town already?
Yeah, I'm right behind them.
I don't know yet.
Are you ready to roll?
Okay, she's ready to roll.
Let's move this back.
We don't need that anymore.
So we have to fill, this is December, then beginning of January, we have to reappoint Carolyn.
Yeah, we got to reappoint her in January.
That's what he told me.
When we swarm in, in January, she said we'd swarm in more than one time.
This looks like it's not certain.
Right, yes, yes. No, 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 we're going to do that, not change.
Why don't you tell Barry to start? Oh, no, I guess we can just have, like, it's on. Let's just, okay, then let's go. Oh, he's going to do the intro.
Oh, okay. No, no, it's a bit, but we're going to do that next meeting.
Do what next meeting? What are we going to do? Oh, I know. He died today.
Yeah, but we're going to do it the next meeting. Sean wants to say, but, you know, but he's counting fast now.
Okay, here we are, we're ready. I'd like to call a regular monthly meeting, Lord, meeting to order, please. Ms. Foche, will you lead us in the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, asking your guidance as we work together to move our school system forward. We are grateful for the dedication of our employees, who are outstanding teachers and outstanding stewards of our finances, and we're thankful that our good works further the work of our school system. Father, we know that many of our children will be out and about very soon for the holiday celebrations, and we pray that they are all kept safe by your love and grace. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Smith, will you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foche, roll call, please.
Mrs. Acevedo. Here. Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Craft. Mr. Egan. Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Mrs. Diesard. Here. Mr. England.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine. Here. Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. At this time, I'd just like to welcome our new board member tonight. We have Ms. Carolyn Craft, who's taken District Six seat. Congratulations, Mr. Craft, and now welcome aboard. Anybody would like to say, jump, Ms. Diesard?
I would just like to, at this time, also welcome Ms. Craft, and also to thank her for accepting the appointment to serve as District Six School Board Member. It's with courage and grace that she's accepted this appointment, and she will, I know Dr. Craft is looking down on her, and he's very pleased that she is sitting in that seat and going to continue the good works that he has done, and for the system, and just to say something about Dr. Craft, you know, you mentioned it before, we appointed Ms. Craft. Dr. Craft has been a huge champion of public education. He was a teacher, he was a great math teacher. I've heard, he taught in a middle school, high school, the Nunez Community College, who was Assistant Dean at the Nunez Community College. He was a School Board Member for twenty-four years. He's been an LSBA president, he served on this board as president, he has served on the retired teachers as president for the state. He has been a true friend and champion of public education, and it has been indeed the greatest honor and privilege to call him our friend, and we thank him for all his service, and we welcome you, Ms. Craft, who was a teacher for so many years. I was in high school when she was a teacher. Always looked up to Ms. Craft, one of the sweetest, kindest teachers ever, and it's so nice that we're going to now get to work with you, and you'll continue his good parts. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members? Okay, Ms. Foche.
And I too want to welcome Carolyn Craft to our board. She has been, in her own right, a tremendous educator over thirty years, both at Shemond High School and then at Andrew Jackson High School, just the backbone of, we call the Home Economics Department at that time, and has influenced the life of so many of our young people here, who have now grown in St. Bernard Parish. So we welcome you in our own right, in your own right, Dr. Craft. I just don't have enough, I guess, good words to say about him. When I started as a high school math teacher at Shemond High School, he was at Shemond Middle School, so we had a lot of interaction as the students moved from the middle to the high school. Then he was appointed to, I think, St. Bernard Community College before it became Nunez Community College, and served with distinction, and then as the dean of the community college. And I also taught at the community college in an adjunct role under him as well. He's been a tremendous mentor to so many people, so many young teachers, young professionals, and just so many people within the community. So as he influenced the lives of his middle school students into high school, but the lives of the students from the community college, and then the community members, and as Mrs. Diesard said, I mean, he never shut down, he never took a moment. I just don't know how you ever kept up with him, because he had more, more energy and more drive and more determination than I think anyone that I've ever met with his work with the retired teachers, the School Board Association, the Rotary Club, I can go on and on with every organization, and of course, as it was in his makeup, any organization he was in, he became the president, and he led the effort, and he's been a champion of public education all of these years, and he's going to be sorely missed, but we are very, very fortunate that you have agreed to serve his unexpired term. We appreciate it, and I know he's, I know he's looking down, and he's saying, "Go, girl", because you're carrying on my legacy, so thank you very much for accepting that position, and we all owe a great deal of debt. I've never seen two stronger people than Dr. and Mrs. Craft, so, welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Warner, you have a point of privilege, please?
Thank you, Mr. England. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and ask for a moment of silence for Jim Big Chief Bigford. Jim was a longtime coach, teacher, and is also known as the voice of the Owls. So can we take a moment of silence? He passed away this morning, and prayer for him and his family. Thank you, Mr. England.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Okay, we're going to move on to item number four, Community Concerns. Ms. Banazak, anybody signed up?
We have none.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Banazak. Okay, move on to item number five, Recognition of Valero's Donation to Special Olympics. We got Mr. Nyland.
Neel.
Neel, here tonight?
Richard Neel.
Moon. Come on up to your front. It's a pleasure to have him here, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I have nothing to say to y'all, we have a presentation for y'all tonight, but thank y'all for allowing us to help y'all in the Special Olympics at St. Bernard Parish. We feel honored that y'all let us be a part of your organization, and it's a great organization, and thanks again.
Well, thank you.
I'll tell you what, Valero's always been a good partner to our school system, and for Special Olympics and special education, this has helped out a great deal. You just don't imagine, you know, what it costs to maintain, to sponsor a Special Olympics, and then just send them off, you know, because they went to Seattle, and we got some Nunez that came back from Seattle. So, and I was very proud of all our Special Olympics, in fact, the wife and I, we watched it on Channel Eight, it was, and at the open ceremony, if anybody had the opportunity to sit down and watch it, it was amazing, it was fantastic, and Coach Frye, they did a fantastic job, and I can't, let me just say this, all the people, the volunteers, the sponsors, it takes a whole village of people to make this happen, and without the help of, with the financial help, it's not but gold for St. Bernard, so, thank you.
In addition to what Mr. England just stated about Valero being such a wonderful community partner, not only are they giving us, they give the Special Education Department funds for the Special Olympics, but they themselves, the employees and former employees, and I know Mr. Nyland, he's out at the Special Olympics Affairs all the time, and they're giving their time and efforts to help make sure that the events are successful, so we appreciate not only the funds, but we appreciate all of y'all's volunteer time also. Thank you for your hearts.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. England. Well, you guys pretty much stole my speech, but I'll move forward anyway, how's that sound? Because I did prepare a couple of words tonight for you guys. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the St. Bernard Parish School Board. As a special education supervisor for our district, and on behalf of our St. Bernard Parish Schools Special Olympic Planning Committee members and Special Olympians here tonight, it gives me great pleasure to speak to you all tonight and shed a light on the reason why our athletes are being honored. For many years now, the St. Bernard Parish School Board has supported all of our athletes as they competed in local, state, and national levels. We are recognized by the State of Louisiana as a program of distinction, and was featured in the district's quality report for two thousand and eighteen. All of this is possible because of the hard work and dedication of the individuals and teens who you will recognize tonight. To begin our recognition, it is my honor to recognize our outstanding community business partner, Valero Mero Foundation, Mero Refinery, sorry. On September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Valero Benefit for Children donated twenty-five thousand dollars to the St. Bernard Parish Public Schools Special Olympics at the annual Benefit for Children Luncheon held here in the parish. The St. Bernard Parish Public School System is gracious to have such a supporting community partnership with Valero and so many others. Valero has been and continues to be a blessing to our school system and also to our local Special Olympians. Tonight, we are fortunate to have our past Volunteer of the Year and retiree of Valero, Mr. Richard Neel, who presented donation to the St. Bernard Parish Schools Special Olympics in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Please join me in giving him a warm welcome and a great parish applause for the Valero's continued support. Thank you. So I said, as I said in my speech, we attended a luncheon, and we were presented with this check, and so we wanted to bring this tonight to the board, to show you that we are super proud to be involved with Valero, and we appreciate the continued support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we would ask Mr. Neel to please wait, and as we recognize our Special Olympians, and then we will pause to take a picture.
Yeah, they're going to come around at home. Yeah, they're standing.
This past spring of two thousand and eighteen, the St. Bernard Parish School Board, along with many community sponsors, volunteers, families, elected officials, governmental entities, and staff members, held our annual local games at Shemond High School, where over one hundred Special Olympians in our parish competed for a spot on the state team and a chance to earn yet another medal at the state games held at Southeastern Louisiana State University in Hammond, Louisiana. As you can imagine, this event is very competitive, and the stakes are high. I am proud to present to you tonight the athletes who not only earned a spot on the team, but returned home with seventeen gold medals, sixteen silver medals, twelve bronze medals, five fourth-place ribbons, and five fifth-place ribbons respectfully. From this competition, a selected group of athletes were asked to try out for the Special Olympics fiftieth anniversary national team based on their state game scores and times. The mission of the United States of America teams is to showcase the abilities of athletes with intellectual disabilities and the impact of Special Olympics through world-class competition, inspirational experiences, and modeling inclusion for all. The two thousand and eighteen Special Olympics U.S. Games was held in Seattle, Washington, July first through the sixth, two thousand and eighteen. More than four thousand athletes and coaches representing fifty state programs and the District of Columbia, along with the support of tens of thousands of volunteers and spectators, competed in fourteen Olympic-type team and individual sports. This year's attendees from St. Bernard Parish included one coach and four team members. Before we recognize these individuals who participated in the games, I would like to recognize the families who are with us tonight, supporting our Special Olympians. Please stand and accept our sincere heartfelt thank you for entrusting the St. Bernard Parish School Board with your children. for entrusting the St. Bernard Parish School Board with your children. These events take many, many hours of planning. Please join me as we recognize the Special Olympic Planning Committee who is able to be with us tonight. Please stand. At this time, I would like to recognize the outstanding athletes of St. Bernard Parish on both the state and national teams. Please hold your applause until all names have been called. Leland Chapman. Matthew Davis.
Great job.
James Dobson.
Great job.
Hannah Harrington. Justin Fraser. Joshua Abear.
Sheriff. Sheriff, hold on. Congratulations.
I'm sorry. Justin Fraser. Joshua Abear. I'm sorry. Adam Jones. Ethan Nelson. Bren Plusha.
Oh, look at this young lady.
Jasmine Ramos. Tessie Redio. Joshua Shulley. B.J. Schultz. Christopher Showalter.
Christopher, congratulations.
Darren Trantacosta. Courtney Tredaway.
Your neck must be hurting. Congratulations.
Grace Tredaway.
Congratulations.
Brianna Foster.
Great, congratulations.
Thomas Miller. Foster, Foster? And Miller. Was he in? They pulled him out of order. Thomas Miller? Brianna Foster.
Good job.
Todd Williams.
Here we go.
Two additional ones, Ms. Fochey? Cassidy Davis. And Emily DeSala. DeSala, Emily?
Sheriff, Emily?
Emily DeSala.
How you doing, Emily? Emily, I've got something for you right here. How's that? Congratulations, great job.
We would also like to recognize our coaches for the state team, Mr. Paul Frye. Mr. Todd Lorsch. Ms. Mary Miller.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Donna Schultz. So, as I mentioned earlier, we had one coach and four athletes to attend the national games with us tonight. We have one of our athletes, Darren Trantacosta, for the national team. And Coach Paul Frye.
We've got another man.
And take a break and take a picture. Do you want to get a volunteers? Let's keep going. At this time, I'd like to recognize the dedicated volunteers of the St. Bernard Parish for the state games. These individuals not only give up a weekend of their time, but continue to provide support to the athletes each day in school and at community events. Please hold your applause until all names have been called. Kayla Mann. Harley Taylor.
Thank you.
Hunter Taylor.
Thank you so much.
Tiffany Taylor. And Troy Taylor. So, board members, before we break for a picture, I just wanted to also recognize Ms. Robin Teppefella. She does not attend the state games, but she is one of our coordinators here in this, for the local district, on the local games. So, she does a lot of hard work. She came tonight to assist. So, I just wanted to recognize her. I'm going to put her back in the state loop next year. I let them have a little break every once in a while. Okay, I think it's time to break for a picture.
Okay, we want to move on with the meeting. You can't close the, can you close that? Okay, move on to item number eight, I mean, seven. Motion to incorporate the report of October ninth, 2018, general committee meeting into the minutes of the October regular monthly meeting. Have a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Smith. Any questions about this? All comments? Please cast your vote. Motion number eight. A motion to approve the following minutes, regular monthly meeting of May twenty-second, 2018, as published on June twenty-ninth, 2018.
So moved.
Second motion by Ms. Dyssart, second by Mr. Long. Any questions? Comments? Please cast your vote. Regular monthly meeting of June twenty-sixth, 2018, as published on July twenty-seventh, 2018. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Campbell. Any questions? Please cast your vote. Regular monthly meeting of July twenty-fourth, 2018, as published on September twenty-eighth, 2018. Have a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Lamore. Any questions? No comments? Please cast your vote. Regular monthly meeting of August twenty-eighth, 2018, as published on September twenty-eighth, 2018. So moved by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Please cast your vote. Regular monthly meeting of September twenty-fifth, 2018, as published on October fifth, 2018. So moved by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Dyssart. Any questions or comments?
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
Just want to thank Ms. Shelby Banazak, who gets these minutes out very timely, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
She does do a fantastic job. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, please cast your vote. Move on to item number nine. Personal changes for month of October. Mr. Granberry, how we doing, sir?
How we doing, all right?
We all staff? We all in good shape?
We hanging in there.
We still looking for some math teachers, or what?
We always like math teachers, but we, believe it or not, we have all our math teachers, but...
Really? That's great.
If one shows up, you never know. We might hire him just in case.
Any questions for Mr. Granberry? If not, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I'm sure Ms. Dyssart wants to recognize a retiree.
I'm sorry.
I would be honored to...
We normally do, that's why I said...
I would just, I would like to recognize Ms. Lynn Murphy, who is a special education teacher who will be retiring. And we want to thank Ms. Murphy for all of her service to the St. Bernard Parish School System and to her students, and we wish you a very happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyssart. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Move on to item number ten. Items to be placed on agenda for next committee meeting. Anybody have anything that wants to be placed on the committee meeting? Okay, if you have up to five days before the next meeting to be put on the agenda, so if you come up with something in the meantime, please get in touch with Ms. Fochey, please. Okay. Item number eleven, super teams recommendations. Ms. Fochey?
Just that last Friday, we had Ring Day at Shumon High School, and it was a really wonderful, wonderful event. The class was outstanding, and the parents and families who attended were wonderful as well. So, it, one of those really nice events where we had the community together for a special, special day. And we also want to, next week, as we approach Halloween, just hope that everyone is going to be safe that night and within our community. I know that will happen, because we have a fantastic sheriff's department and community membership. The November first is a holiday for our students and staff, so we'll be closed then. And then on November sixth, now, our offices will be open, but the schools will be closed. And on November sixth, which is Election Day, our students will be off, but our teachers will be here for professional development. And I also want to remind people that tonight is report card conference night for our elementary schools, and I know that it's being well-attended as we speak. Tomorrow night for our middle schools, and Thursday night for our high school.
That's it, Ms. Fochey?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from any board members before we adjourn? Ms. Lamore?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Craft, and congratulations on your first meeting. It is so wonderful to have you here. Like Ms. Dyssart and Ms. Fochey said earlier, we will greatly miss Dr. Craft, but I know that you are carrying out his legacy. So, thank you for accepting this appointment, and congratulations. Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard. Item number twelve, adjournment. Have a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? This means adjourn. Thank you and good night.